All right, we're going to move on to our next bill. The next bill is Bill 21-0033, Imari's LGBTQ Procurement Preference Act, for the purpose of creating an LGBTQ business enterprise LGBTQBE program to be administered by the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, defining certain terms, establishing the eligibility, excuse me, establishing the eligibility requirements for firms seeking to participate in the LGBTQBE program, establishing revocation criteria for firms in the LGBTQBE program, authorizing the city to employ various affirmative procurement initiatives to promote the award of city contracts to LGBTQBEs, requiring annual reports on the LGBTQBE program, requiring periodic hearings on and review of the LGBTQBE program, providing for the appeal of certain adverse determinations by the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, setting certain penalties, correcting, conforming, and clarifying related provisions, renumbering certain sections, and generally relating to the city procurement requirements. This bill was introduced on February 8th, 2021. And but before I hand off to the sponsor, I want to, before we begin, I want to take a moment to address some of the recent mischaracterizations in the media about why this bill was referred back to committee. So first, I want to be clear that my colleagues and I unanimously supported this bill and continue to support the intention of this bill. But after the last hearing, there were a number of concerns that were brought forward by city agencies. Unfortunately, some of these city agencies were not in attendance or didn't have an opportunity to update their bill reports after the committee accepted the amendments put forward by the law department. Councilwoman Ramos and I tried our best during a full week of 13-hour budget meetings to try to address these concerns, but unfortunately, I didn't feel like we had quite enough time to come to a clear decision, to present to the council and even more. I believe that it would be in the best interest of the city to discuss the matters in a public committee forum, where we can have immediate feedback from our city representatives and require follow-up where needed. So I want to be clear again, this bill was not recalled because of a vendetta. It was referred back to the committee primarily because I believe that we have a responsibility to place, to pass the very best legislation that we can. So today, we'll have the opportunity to work through the concerns brought forward after our last session, and I really want to thank the sponsor. We've been working very closely since the last hearing. And my colleagues in advance for your diligence on this bill. And I hope that with our additional effort and additional eyes on this bill, that we can make Baltimore proud. So, thank you. And I want to hand off to Councilwoman Ramos, the sponsor.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos.
If it's okay with you and Councilwoman Ramos, can I just very briefly respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One, I want to thank the sponsor for her great work and just the constant communication on this. She's been great to work with on this. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership. And while I don't really consider a blog that quotes elected officials on the condition of anonymity on a regular basis, I want to say that other than that, I agree with every single thing you said. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to hand off to Councilwoman Ramos, sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I just want to reemphasize the purpose of the bill. It is named after Imari, whose family are constituents of mine. Imari was a black trans man who was a business owner in our city and very badly discriminated against, to the point where he was so distraught about it, he took his own life. This bill is in memorial to him and to his efforts and as a way to make sure that all of our community in Baltimore get the opportunities to be able to succeed. And so the point here is to provide a LGBTQ procurement program. The amendments that were voted on in the last committee are to have a disparity study that studies what the discrepancy and the discrimination is and how much it is to establish a goal. Not to be taking away from the MBE or WBE goals, but to be in addition to. And then also, once that study is completed, then the program kicks in. So I also want to address the issue of capacity. I understand that Embu needs more people, needs more help to be able to implement what they're mandated to do now and this new program. And I've committed publicly to Mr. Chair, I want to commit to this committee and to the council as a whole, that I'm committed to make it work. I'm the, I used to be the chair of the Baltimore Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I understand that we need these amazing opportunities for our contractors. And so I'm prepared to work hard to make sure that Embu and anything else related to that procurement office, et cetera, get the resources that they need to implement this and also what we need for MBE and WBE. So it's not meant to take away from or replace. It is meant to be in addition, so that we're adding opportunities to many of the members of our community. And then last, again, this work was done prior to even this bill coming in. Jabari Lyles worked on this very hard prior to they leaving the city and leaving city government. They're still here, leaving city government. And so had really started the building blocks to this program being implemented. And so my intent was to codify that work. So I look forward to working with the committee. I appreciate that the chair has been so diligent to make sure that we're bringing this back right away, to make sure that all of our committee members are getting the same information that we all got. And I look forward to passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. So the committee will now hear from agency representatives again. Please, once again, state your name. We're going to start off with the law department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Obviously, this is a second round of hearings on the same. Report is exactly the same. There's no legal issue with this bill. I think there's been some confusion because there was a past bill introduced in a prior council about small local businesses. And at the time, there were constitutional issues with that, as well as a charter problem. There no longer is a charter problem for that or for this bill. The charter was changed. So there is absolutely no legal issue with the bill in front of you. We recommend that you reference that section of the charter that was subsequently changed and now provides for a preference for small, local, or disadvantaged businesses. And so this bill would fall under that. There's no legal issue whatsoever. The existing small and local problem still has constitutional issues, but this LGBTQ bill would not have those same issues. Unlike being small, a race, a gender, a sexual orientation classification is properly considered part of a civil rights issue in the way that small or local would not be. And so they're very different. And if there's any confusion there on those concepts, I'm happy to take any questions. But again, this bill, 21-0033, is legal. There's a section in the charter that provides for it, and it does not have any of the issues that plagued an earlier bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. And I think it may, it is helpful for you to explain that. I think that was one of the questions while we were trying to figure out what we were going to do during budget week for this bill that I wasn't clear on. And understanding why a similar program like the SLBE program had constitutional challenges, how this one was different and why this one doesn't have constitutional challenges, I wasn't really clear on that. And so it helps for you to explain the difference there.
Mr. Chair, can I just provide some context? Because I didn't put that in my remarks.
Please do.
For the public and for my committee members, committee colleagues, one of the concerns that came from Embu at the time, right after we had voted on the bill last time, was why don't we integrate this into the SBLE program? And so that's why we, you know, asked Ms. Rulie for her advice on the program. And this is where she came up with the fact that it is unconstitutional and it has not been stood up. As a matter of fact, we also learned that it was going to be vetoed at the time that it was passed and was messed up. It was under Mayor Rollins Blake, and that administration just messed up the number of days. So standing up a program that is unconstitutional doesn't make sense. So for us, we're, you know, going back to the original idea of having the program as written. So I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but thank you. I've forgotten to add that context.
No, that helps a lot. I think it also might be helpful. I'm not sure how familiar folks are with the SLBE program. I can tell you, before we started working on this bill, I wasn't very familiar with it, also because we've never used it. So it may be helpful when we do get down to Embu to maybe talk about that and what it is, or rather, what it really isn't, because it's not functioning, and what the challenges are there. So I'll continue to move down. Of course, we've got Embu up next. Mr. Ingram?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and council, committee members. I'm Darnell Ingram. I am temporarily standing in the gap for our fearless leader, Shella Miller, who's transitioned to another position. However, to address your question specifically regarding Embu capacity will be a major concern as relates to the enforcement of this bill. And those are the considerations that Embu will need to realize and perfect to ensure that we meet the compliance obligations moving forward.
We'll get through the reports. I do want to, at some point, circle back and talk through each of the issues that were brought forward from Embu before we move anything forward. So I'll come back to you, Mr. Ingram, and I'd like to dig a little bit deeper into what the capacity issues are, what we expect from a program like this, the timeline, so on and so forth, so that we can better understand the impact that we're having and if it has any draw on the current responsibilities of the Embu office. So we'll come back to you. Next up, I've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We support the intent of this legislation. Our report does talk about the costs. Just so folks are aware, in terms of the disparity study that is a part of the amendment that would be required, we have estimates that are far ranging, but could be up to $1 million. Just for some context, in terms of the disparity studies that have been conducted for MBE, WBE, the study conducted in 2014 was 695,000, and the current study that's underway is up to 715,000 right now. And then beyond those costs are the costs, as Deputy Solicitor Ingram mentioned, for implementation. Our estimate for implementing this program is approximately $781,000. So, I'm sorry. So for those reasons, right now, we have been talking with the sponsor around some of the concerns that have been raised and are working on that. But at this point in time, we still would have to oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Next up, I've got the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology.
Good afternoon, Layla Layman, Chief of Staff for BESIT. We stand by our report and have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Office of the Comptroller.
Good afternoon, Casey Callahan, Director of Communications for the Office of the Comptroller. We stand by our bill, our bill report, excuse me, and we defer to Embu. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I've got the Mayor's Office of Minority and Women-Owned Business Development.
This is Paul Taylor, and I stand by our initial report on this and the amendments to the bill, which looks at a disparity study to really understand the need and discriminatory practices that may be prohibiting LGBTQ businesses from participating in our programs.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next up, we've got the Office of Equity. Do we have anybody from the Office of Equity? Nina?
Mr. Chair, I talked with the Chief Equity Officer earlier today, and they have a big conference that they're working on today, so she wasn't able to make it. But I have to talk with her, and I can talk about that later.
Got it. All right. Thank you. So we will move on to open the questions from the committee. And so I think what, I kind of want this to be more of a discussion. Of course, there should be a ton of questions regarding that. What I'd like to do is line out the issues, line up the issues that were brought up after our initial vote. One, of course, we've touched on very quickly, and that's the capacity concern. And so I'll just kind of put that out there. The next one that we touched on briefly as well, and this was touched on a little bit by the law department, was the SLBE program as some sort of alternative option. The next concern was around the cost of the disparity study and the implementation of the program. And Councilwoman Ramos, is there anything else I'm missing here from our previous discussions?
There was a question from the Council President's Office about equity. And so we probably want to describe, discuss that as well.
Sure. That's right. So of course, the constitutionality issue, excuse me, rather, the SLBE issue, we, I think we've kind of touched on. I don't know if law, you guys want to add anything else to that conversation? I think you sufficiently touched on why that may not be really an option or an answer to some of the concerns that we put forward.
Sure, Councilmember. So the current law is for a preference for local, small businesses. It's not being implemented right now because there aren't resources for it. But it is in the city's code, as the Councilwoman Ramos noted. The mayor meant to veto it, miscalculated the number of days for the pocket veto, and it instead went into effect regardless of the law. And, you know, even when the law department believes that something is unconstitutional, once it's passed, you know, we will work to implement it. This is not being implemented because there aren't the resources for it. But there is a vast difference between the unconstitutionality of a small and local bill preference, I'm sorry, a small and local preference in that bill to an LGBTQ preference, or that's being proposed here, or the existing minority or women's preferences. And the reason is several. One, there's a commerce clause and an equal protection clause issue, as well as a privileges and immunities clause for small, local businesses. Commerce clause says governments can't prefer their own local businesses over those outside of their jurisdiction. So a small and local business preference does that. Secondly, privileges and immunities have talked about, you know, the same thing. The employees of those small businesses could sue to challenge the law on that same local favoritism ground. So those are both, the commerce and the privileges and immunities are both the local problem. The other vast difference, and neither of those local preferences exist in the women's minority or LGBTQ preferences. They're not about local, so they don't suffer from any of those same problems. As for the equal protection clause, every single time the government wants to give a preference to, I mean, we're not discriminating against, we're trying to give a preference to minority and women businesses. You have to show, in order to meet the equal protection clause, that distinction between those groups and the regular companies bidding for government work is important and sufficient to further a legitimate government interest that goes towards remedying past discrimination. So we have to have a study for the minority and the women's businesses, and we would have to have a similar study for LGBTQ or for small and local. So again, no study was done for smaller, local. No study has yet been done for LGBTQ. They all need a study in order to overcome that issue. But there's, again, quite a possibility that LGBTQ, although not currently part of the federal civil rights law, would be an appropriate part of that. Because just like race or gender, LGBTQ groups would fit well into a civil rights protection. Being small or being local does not fit in that same group. It's not the same kind of classification. Many small and local businesses want to grow up and be big and international, and it's not the same kind of civil rights. So the small, local bill that was enacted and is on the books is not being utilized, not simply because it's got constitutional problems, but mostly because there are no resources to implement it. You would have to have some sort of study, and that study's required for LGBTQ, just like it's required for any others. Anytime you want to prefer a group of people, you've got to do the study. And so hopefully, that gives a little more context. But, you know, essentially, when you prefer small and local, you have problems that don't exist with minority, women, or LGBTQ.
Got it. So if I understand you correctly, I'll just quickly summarize. Looking for my notes, you're saying that for the SLBE program, this would not really resolve the issues that we're trying to address here with this bill as an alternative, because, one, it's a constitutional concern. Two, in order to implement it, you would need additional resources anyway, which is one of the concerns that we have about this bill. And then, three, you would need a study to justify a preference for small, local, small businesses under that. Am I understanding that correctly? So effectively, everything we need to do--
You need a study no matter what.
Everything we need to do here, we would still need to do there, is what you're saying?
Yes. I'm saying the current bill, the small, local preference that's in the law right now, it would also need a study, so it needs the resources for that study. But even if it gets a study, just like Embu has, and just like we hope LGBTQ would have, even if you got a study, you wouldn't be done with your constitutional problems because you have a separate small and local issue with that preference that you don't have for race, gender, LGBTQ. Those are more civil rights type things. Once you do the study, then you've overcome your constitutional issue. That's not true with small and local business. But what is the same between that already enacted law and this LGBTQ law is the lack of resources for the study and the implementation. They're the same in terms of a resource preference, but they are not the same in terms of their legal constitutional analysis.
Got it. Thank you very much. I want to open the floor to questions from the committee, if there are any at the moment. Seeing the questions, we'll move on. I have another one, and this one is actually to Embu, and I guess technically also to Finance, to better understand the cost and capacity concerns. Now, one, we understand that Embu is already kind of underwater in meeting its current needs to city agencies around contracts. But, one, where are we there? And how would this change that? And I think the additional insight, any additional insight in the estimations that we're getting from Finance, how does that match up with the needs for these programs? I understand, I said, Mara, you said it would cost $781,000 to implement this program. How many positions is that? How do we get to those numbers? And if you can give me some insight there, that would be really helpful.
I can go first just on that question, if that's okay. So we discussed our, this call assessment with Embu. Every time that Finance does a fiscal analysis for bills about implementation of programs, we speak with the agencies about the need. And so in speaking with Embu, the discussion was that there would need to be four personnel. So we have a program coordinator, a compliance officer, office support staff, and an investigator listed as the personnel required for that program. The personnel costs. I believe, actually, I apologize, it was four compliance officers, two support staff, and two investigators. I misread. So that is a total of about nine positions that were estimated to properly run the program for a total cost, for personnel costs of 776,500. And then we added in some technology costs that are required around personnel for computers, of course, and everything, which gets us to the 781,000. So again, nine positions, a program coordinator, four compliance officers, two office support staff, and two investigators.
Thank you, Mara. And Embu, I read the report, so I think I know the answer to this already. But how many staff do we currently have to run the current system? Mr. Ingram? How many, how many staff do we have at the moment to run the current program?
Currently, we have six staff to run the program as relates to minority and women business enterprises.
Got it. So if my understanding is correct, we would need to more than double the office in order to adequately meet the need for this program?
Correct. And the reason why is the current makeup of the staff is not conducive for the needs of Embu currently. And so there will be some overlapping as well, which we would try to prohibit, but as an efficiency and effectiveness, we'll probably have to do some overlapping. That current makeup doesn't even fit the current need of the city.
Do we have a clear sense of what we actually need to just do what we're mandated to do at the moment?
Yes. So currently, I'm actually doing a whole organizational assessment in our effectiveness to reimagine how Embu can affect and also perfect its requirements under law. Been coordinating with other agencies, particularly one in Philadelphia, who's doing a similar work. And so once we do that assessment, which I think I hope to end by the end of the year, at the end of the summer, sorry, that will be able to give more guidance as to what the total need will be for the office. Definitely don't want to go in there blindly and make misrepresentations without doing a truly deep dive into the needs, given the demands of the office and the workload that staff is currently experiencing. So I'll be able to report to you on that by the end of the summer.
End of the summer. Okay. That would be really helpful to know. And the summer's a long time. But if there's any way that we can get a better understanding of that sooner, that would certainly be helpful to know. But I want to open up the floor to questions from the committee. Councilwoman Ramos?
Do the six positions that you just talked about include the other two that are added into the budget currently? So now you're going to have eight?
So currently, we have two that came over. We have six, six. It was seven, but our director, she just moved to another agency. So it's currently six with the two.
Yeah, it see, and so you're saying that the
Let me just make, I'm trying to process in my head, everybody, give me one second. Six or seven, I want to be clear.
So part of the nine that have been added here for the LGBT piece would have to do, there would be some work together. So what we would need is actually what the office totally needs, not just nine for one program, nine for the other, and nine for other. Like, that's not reality. What I'm, what I'm asking is, because you had mentioned earlier that the positions, they're going to have to, so it's not nine that is needed to run the LGBT program. It's nine plus this, you know, plus maybe one or two more to make sure that you're, that the MBE program is sufficient. So that everybody, so because not everybody's going to, everybody's going to be sort of working together and doing certifications on various, so it's not like there's just nine people on one program. They're going to be all working together. So we'd be better, so we're not talking about an additional 750,000 for just this program. What we need is a $750,000 for the entire office to have what it needs for both programs, which various people will be doing both programs in that office, correct?
That, that depends on how you view the finances calculation. When I, when I read the report, it seems it was specific to nine additional staff. And, and if, from my own experiences as doing process improvements, there's a mobilization aspect where you need to structure the organization, create policies and procedures, and implement, implement those things, which the program officer would do. Then also, there will be some mirroring or some tethering of similar job responsibilities because compliance, the, the job function is similarly the same, you just added a component, which is a new class. Essentially, that's what you're doing with the caveats and that this, this legislation may be specific to. And you would need those individuals to do that specific work for the LGBTQ component. However, there may be some opportunities for cross-training, well, let me not say cross-training, more cross-contamination of work, if I can use that in a loose term, because there may be times where you need people to supplement work. There may be influxes in certain compliances or certain investigations where you need people to support those initiatives. So I, I don't know if we can silo that out into specifically that this would be a broad need for the entire office as opposed to this particular specific type of compliance, because it's new to the city. And we can't really say without a disparity study and the light as to what the need would be for this particular new work.
Okay, so that, that was, if I can, Mr. Chair. The, you know, my next piece is that we can't actually know how much this is going to be because it may be that the goal is 1%, and so you're not going to have four compliance officers for 1% a goal, right? So, and then the other piece of it is the cost for certification. There is precedent in other cities that are doing this that the certification process is done externally, and that's done through the, the National Chamber, LGBT Chamber, that has done it in other ways. So the legislation says that the, and the amendment says, the legislation says that MBU has to do the certification, but they can certainly work with external partners, which is exactly what Jabari Lyles was going for when they were doing this work initially. So that there are ways to cut costs here, and I don't want these cost estimates to scare any of my colleagues from voting for this bill because A, we still need to do the study. B, we know for a fact that MB, MBE and WE program needs more funding. And C, there are ways to work this out. So, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I mean, I think that I don't, again, I don't want the cost here because it's a priority of ours to prohibit, you know, us passing this bill. And I, but I appreciate the fact that you wanted to have this, this conversation. I'm just urging my colleagues that, you know, this, this is something that I'm committed to in terms of getting the, the program set up, but that, that we can't actually accurately count how much the cost is going to be until the study is done to understand what the compliance needs are going to be and also work with the National Chamber on the certification piece.
Sure. Is that the end of your question? Councilman, thank you. I, I think, I, I think this sort of line of question, I think it's just helpful in informing folks and understanding what, what we'd be stepping into and if there are things that we can do to better, better prepare for that. I think especially because I think at the moment, we can be blunt, we're not really meeting, we're not meeting the task at the moment. And, you know, I, I think Councilman Ramos is, is right on. We need to be fighting to make sure that your office has the resources it needs to be effective in its job. So I, I really appreciate that. Any other questions from the committee? Before I move into the next, next issue? All right. So you know, no questions, I'll move on to the, the next piece, and this was around equity. And I'll try to explain as best I can the concerns that I've seen float around around equity. And maybe, actually, I'll let, I'll let Councilman Ramos try to explain the, the logic here better, better than I can. If you're missing something, I'll let you know.
So there's two aspects of this piece, and we, Mr. Chair, we do have to talk about the cost of the study because I have, we have to go through that, but, and we didn't talk about that, so I don't know if you want to go back to it.
Let's, let's go through that first.
It's up to you.
Let's do-
It's up to you. Okay, all right.
So the, the study, I'll, I'll circle back to the finance, the cost of study. Can you give us a little bit of insight on how you got there, what our options are? As I understand from you, you just stated out, Mara, that the cost is $715,000 for the study? Can you just give me a little more insight there?
Certainly. So the cost of study would be dependent on several factors, but we know from other studies that are, other disparity studies in other jurisdictions as well, and some of our work in this city on disparity studies, that they can get pretty high, which is why we had a range of up to 1 million, depending on how it goes. However, the figures that I quoted were for the MBE, WBE disparity studies that have been going on. So in 2014, the study that was completed had a cost of $695,000. And the call, the study that is currently ongoing was just increased to $715,000. And so that is for the current disparity studies. So to add another disparity study on top of that, again, there are several factors that could impact the cost, but we just want to be aware that, again, it's an additional cost for that study that would need to happen pretty regularly, similar to the MBE, WBE studies that go on now.
And do we, I mean, because because we've been doing the disparity studies for minorities and, and women for some time, I imagine that should be a well-oiled machine. Do we expect that there's anything more complicated, difficult with regard to doing a study for LGBTQ population?
So in terms of my understanding around this, and I might defer to Deputy Solicitor Ingram on how these studies work more specifically, but my understanding is at least the initial study can be a bit more cumbersome than the following studies because you're having to collect and do a lot of research on what are the businesses in the area and collect that information. We have some good information, as the sponsor has pointed out, in CityBuy, where some vendors are able to self-identify and choose to do that as LGBTQ businesses. So we have some of that already, but there is some initial research that needs to be done to really gather the full scope that then I believe, again, Deputy Solicitor Ingram, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe after that, the following studies require less research. And I'll defer to you if there's anything that I misspoke or missed.
Thank, thank you for that. And she's definitely on point and correct with that. The initial study will be a little bit more intrusive and exhaustive, given this is new environment and climate to the city. This is a great opportunity for the city to do something for the LGBTQ community, but we don't want to take lightly the, the workload that will ensue. There's many steps from initial gathering, talking with city officials and getting data. Data gathering is a major aspect of it, doing surveys, both confidential and public, doing presentations, following up, having formal meetings with individual companies. I mean, it's a very exhaustive process, and I think it's very great for our city to be doing it, but I don't want to take it lightly as though this is something that can just happen overnight.
Got it. Thank you. And then also with, with the study, we'd have to do it biannually, if I understand correctly. No, or is it just a one-time study, or?
No, it's multiple studies, I believe, for the city, and I'll correct myself at another date, but I believe the frequency is four years from my conversations with the former direct chief of MBU, it's every four years.
And I will just note that I believe each time we do the study, we have to put it out for bid. So it's a different, not necessarily the same company every time, so just the procurement process for that has to go through as well, just to make sure everyone's aware.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee about costs? Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in our, we have a, the, one of the amendments was to conduct the study in two years, so that gives us time to make sure that we have the right funding before we even kick in the program. And we did it that way because the former chief of MBU had said we can't actually integrate it into the disparity study that's happening now. And, Mr. Ingram, you said earlier that we might actually be able to put it into this study that's going on. So, because that would actually cut the cost significantly because it's already happening and, you know, do we, I know this was like an hour ago, so do you know if there's like, if you were able to check in on that? Because that is, we, we were told that it couldn't go in to the regular disparity study because it's, LGBT is not a protected class on the federal level. But it is a protected class, LGBT and sexual orientation is a protected class here in Baltimore. And so that we could, if it's not too late into the process, be able to integrate it into what we have. So do you, I know, like I said, it may not have enough time, but I wanted to know if you were able to do any, any asking about that?
Yeah, our meeting was literally an hour ago, so I know I was not able to reach out to the current vendor who's undertaking this disparity study. However, I want to give a clarification, as I stated in our meeting, that for us to do a modification to the current contract, the vendor should have the experience and the knowledge to do so, and I don't have the information. So it's really depending, I know it's a lower language, but very, very much depends on the contractor's capacity to do the work. And if they're unable to do so, then we will have to go out for bid, and that's a process. And the process for doing disparity, disparity studies could take over a year and depend on when we get the funding and crossing fiscal years. So the two-year mark may be something of your concern or something that you may want to consider as well.
Thanks. And then, Mr. Chair, another question is my understanding of what the expense is in these disparity studies. And I've, again, as the former chair of the Baltimore Hispanic Chamber, I've participated in this kind of stuff, is the actual finding of the companies to survey and interview. And the fact that we already have, if you go to CityBuy, I have it right up here, and you go to vendor search, and you, and you go down and it has the categories, there is the LGBTQ category, and there's also the NCLCC category, where LGBT companies have already been certified by the National Chamber. So, so the marketing piece, and plus we have the LGBT Chamber and other places. So the marketing to try to find the companies, I'm not sure that that's going to be a huge issue. I, I realize that they're expensive, but I'm just saying that we may be able to reduce that cost significantly because we've already done, through Jabari's work, some of, you know, some of that work. So either way, whether we add it to this current one or do a new one, that that might be an opportunity. And then the second piece is my understanding, well, you can answer that, and then I've got another question from Ms. James.
Sorry, I didn't, if you can't rephrase your question for me?
Just that, don't you think that it'll reduce the cost to try to find, you know, to try to find the companies? Because we've already been doing the work.
Thank you for clarifying. So given that this is a new service that MBU will be doing, I, I agree that at, there may be a small aspect of self-marketing because the market will be open, and businesses that identify as LGBTQIA+. Will be aware and become aware and want to certify to get the opportunity. But it's not, this, our law is, won't be exclusive just to the city proper. It will be inclusive of the Baltimore metropolitan area. So maybe an opportunity for us to market that as well, given the fact that a lot of organizations and companies may not have the knowledge or or the access to these particular proceedings, as well as council proceedings, to be aware of this particular law. And so a marketing budget will be necessary to ensure that we're getting, as I say, the bang for our buck and the capacity to really do a great job.
If I may jump in, Chairperson Conway, but just want to also note, I would agree with you, Councilwoman Ramos, that we have a jumping off list from CityBuy. But I should also note that the, and this is something I think we've brought up before in some of our hearings around MBE, WBE procurement in general, that this is something that the vendors self-identify, and it isn't necessarily something that right now MBU is certifying and verifying that certification or that we are. So while we have something to work from, it's not necessarily an exact list, and it doesn't necessarily, somebody might be claiming it, but not actually be certified in that way. So I just want to add that clarity.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I was just, you're exactly right, they're not certified. So, other than those that have gone through the National Chamber. And then my question to you, Ms. James, was that the MBE, WBE studies are rather large because you have to find out, you, the, the city has to find out not only about whether or not a company is minority. There's actually goals for every single classification, correct? So African-American, Hispanic, women-owned, et cetera. So the study is much larger and more robust. So the cost that you quoted is because it's much more robust, whereas the new study on one particular topic may not be a million dollars. Now, if we integrate it into the larger study, then, you know, obviously it gets integrated. But I just, don't you think that that's the case? Like, it's a much larger study, so using the stud, the much larger study for various classifications to compare with what we're trying to do here may not necessarily be as accurate as, as we were hoping.
It's certainly possible. I will say, I, again, am not an expert in the disparity studies and how they are set up and run and the different classifications that would exist. However, it is the figures that we have to compare to. And I think that we would probably, I would defer again to possibly Deputy Solicitor Ingram on if there is any specific clarification to make about that, something that we can really know right now, considering we're still in the early phases of figuring out what the study would be and what the focus would be.
I understand is how they scope out the work is, it's not based on the class but the amount of time and effort that they will spend on doing the investigation and or writing a report. I'm not sure whether a specific identified class is the mark for how they make those costing decisions. It's about the amount of time and effort and resources they'd be utilizing.
But I think they would, I mean, they have to spend time looking at African-American business. They have to spend time looking at Hispanic business, they, because there's different goals for each one. So my case is just that the, using the numbers for the larger study may not be as accurate to, to say, a million dollars for a- to say a million dollars for a small study with, you know, just one, just one classification. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. I think also, and I guess this really ties to another part of that question, in understanding, because we don't know yet, and I would love to have follow-up, Mr. Ingram, on this, but whether or not we have the ability to include it in the study. If we do have that ability, and it doesn't add too much more time to what report they would already be doing, it may not cost that much more. But if we are unable to do that, the startup costs just also still might be significant. It's really hard to accurately assess that. So I see where you're coming from, Councilwoman Ramos. And I do have a lot of, I'm very curious about what the reality is there in the costs. And of course, we'd have to go through a bidding process in order to do so.
So if we were to utilize the current vendor, and I can't represent whether they have the capacity or the capabilities to do so. In any event, it will still be, we probably won't have the same amount of mobilization cost, but there will be a mobilization cost to get up to speed and do the assessment, see what's out there, what's needed, and what will be the span of their investigation to determine, to do surveys and reporting and follow-ups and the like. So historically, in government contracting, modifications are cheaper than doing a whole new contract. I agree. But to what extent, I can't represent to you what that percentage variance may be today. And that will entail having in-depth conversations with the vendor.
Awesome. Thank you.
Chairperson Conway, if I can just add briefly, just the procurement side. In talking with Director Keisha Brown, who had to drop off the call, but similar to what Deputy Solicitor Ingram stated, if they are able to do this, the current vendor, then there could be an amendment to the contract to include it. If not, then we'd have to do something else. But I just want to also highlight that the current contract is, I believe, to end February 28, 2022, to have the study done. So it would definitely be cramming it in.
It may also.
But we can, my understanding is we can extend that.
So there would need to be probably, again, more like procurement, going to BOE to extend again. I just want to just add those steps that would be needed.
Well, it's their capacity to add this additional work, I'm unaware as well, which could cause a cost. Because right now, as you rightly said, the contract is ending. We want to make sure we're meeting our schedule and timeline for the current study. And so we don't want to affect that as well. So there's many unknowns to really address it. But historically, modifications and changes are normally cheaper. But there's factors that need to go into play with that.
So if you could, as best as possible, try to get back to us with answers to two questions. One, if we are able to add this to, if it is potentially a possibility for us to add this to the current study. And if not, it seems that the estimated cost for the study may or may not be off, depending on the startup cost to do a study to begin with. You know, are we looking at studies that generally cost over a half million dollars? Or do more specific studies cost significantly less because you're not trying to measure a bunch of different disparities from different groups? So I'm very curious about that. And if we have the ability to do any refinement in that assessment, that would be helpful. Anything else like that? Okay. So with that, we'll move on to the equity concerns.
Mr. Chair, I just want to know if any of my other colleagues, I know this was a concern to some of my other colleagues, the cost of the study. So if any of the others have any questions.
Any questions from folks on the committee?
You guys are covering everything I wanted to ask, so just keep going. I'm here. I'm listening.
Good. I'm glad you guys are dealing with us. So these are the questions we were trying to figure out during Budget Week. So you can tell, there's no way it was going to happen. So, all right, we'll move on to the question around equity. Councilwoman Ramos, do you mind giving a little context? I think it's multifaceted then, as I remember, but if you could try and explain.
I think there's sort of two aspects. The first is whether or not this program would take away from minority contracting, MBEWBE. And then the second was, how do we make sure that with the LGBT program that it is also run with a lens towards equity? And because we do have, I'm just going to be frank about it. We do have members of the LGBT community that are, you know, white men and white women. And so the fear has been, well, how do we make sure that, you know, not all the contracts go, you know, in that direction? And so I wanted to, well, on the first aspect, just repeat what I said earlier, that this program does not take away from minority contracting. It is in addition to, so that we have goals specifically for MBEWBE. I don't like saying minority because we're a minority-majority city. So I want to, you know, have a different classification if we can. And then also, so it adds, it adds a program and a goal it does not take away from. So I know that some people are concerned about the word preference in the act. That's just a technical term by which we're, you know, having to call it because we're, for procurement purposes. And then on the second aspect, I understand where folks are coming from on this. And I had a long conversation with Jabari, and they were very clear, and I'm sorry that they couldn't be here today, that that wasn't the intent as they were working towards this particular program. And that there are, you know, again, because our city is, and this bill is actually named for a black trans person, there are lots of people who would rather classify as LGBT than, you know, something else. So I do want to have a larger conversation with Chief Equity Officer Dana Moore. I know that she's been working with all of the agencies to make sure that there is an equity lens when doing work. So I would, I don't know if the committee needs an amendment to explain this, but that the work of the Equity Office and the work of the IMBU office is equity, period. And so I think, I mean, I think having a discussion with Chief Moore would be a good one to try to address this issue. But I'm not quite sure that this is, that is the sticking point because the intent and the work, and of course, my commitment in terms of, you know, making sure that this is working, is that we're moving this forward with an equity lens, making sure that Black and Brown communities are also represented in this work.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. And I know there's a lot there. So I'll pose this as a question to the committee. Is anyone unclear on the points that Councilwoman Ramos hit on? Seeing no hands, no questions, no concerns, we'll move on and try to address those issues. I think one additional piece, Councilwoman Ramos, and we talked about this as we were looking through the LGBTQ businesses in CityBuy, that there weren't many local ones. And whether or not a program like this would then gear towards folks coming from the outside. And I think, and maybe I'm taking some of the words out of your mouth from before, and if I'm not characterizing them correct, correctly, Mr. Ingram, let me know. We don't fully know what the true impact of the program will be because it hasn't been advertised as such. And so there may be more local businesses that are LGBTQ businesses that are local as opposed to the, I think, you know, handful that Councilwoman and I identified when we went through the CityBuy system. So that was an additional sort of equity piece. We don't necessarily want to, you know, support LGBTQ businesses at the expense of local LGBTQ businesses, if that makes any sense. So to that end, I guess, Councilwoman Ramos, I guess you're suggesting that we really want to circle back with Director Moore on these concerns? So how about this? I think we should, because she's not in the meeting right now, maybe we circle back to her and we request answers to some of these questions or solutions to some of these questions to report out for the committee next time we do hear the bill. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think because we have this question about whether to include the cost into the current study and that, you know, it would be, if we're going to be holding the bill anyway, to go ahead and ask these questions of our office.
Okay. All right, so I have that as a follow-up as well. We'll follow up with Dana Moore.
Mr. Chair, can I make a quick comment on that, though?
Yes.
Or maybe it's a question, because I guess I would want to know, beyond CityBuy, what other ways are there out there? And I think you all may have touched on this a little bit earlier, to identify, I guess, the scope of businesses. My hesitation with CityBuy as the metric is, for example, when I was working on the emergency procurement bill earlier this year, we came across a PPE, black woman-owned PPE maker who had been in business for over a decade and wasn't in CityBuy, had never been contacted by the city, like, just wasn't even in the ecosystem. And so my fear is that that may not be the best way to get the full lay of the land because there just may be that people don't even know how to register or to register. You know what I mean? Like, they're just, I mean, clearly, like, agencies are doing, like, trainings on how to do business with the cities. So clearly, we know whether it's this program or others, we still have a lot of work to do to connect people to the system. So I guess, part question, part statement on that.
Yeah, I think, Councilman Burnett, that's an excellent point. And you're delving into a territory I'm very curious about. And, you know, I've been playing meeting tag with Mr. Shorter on this, but on procurement. And what are we doing to make sure that we get a diversity of folks in CityBuy that we're diversifying those contracts? And yes, 100%.
If I'm, hey, Mr. Chair. The colleague, the, totally agree on your question around CityBuy. There is a local LGBT chamber that can also and is ready to send out, you know, emails, whatever it is, to make sure that others, you know, participate in the study. We also have all of our LGBT networks throughout the city, and it is a humongous network, as you know, that would also get the word out about the potential study. My use of saying that CityBuy, that those businesses exist in CityBuy is just simply as an example that some of this work is being done already.
Got it. And it may be just broadly helpful, I don't want to derail the conversation, but for the agency folks to figure out, just generally, maybe there is an opening for another CityBuy training through the chamber, just anyway. Because obviously, intersectionality exists. So while this particular program may not currently exist, the MBE program does, and someone may be Black and queer and identifies as a woman, and therefore, still may not know how to get into CityBuy. So there's still maybe, you know, a need for that, just generally, but point taken. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, I did remember just one quick question for Mr. Ingram or Mr. Taylor, if I can.
Yes, go ahead.
This has to do with cost of the study. One other piece that we learned recently was that somehow, at some point, the, there, we understood from Jabari that actually a disparity study was started at some point for the LGBT community. And if you know where that is or what's going on with it, that would be great to know.
This is Paul Taylor. I believe the study that was being considered was the disparity study that is going on now. It was not an additional new one. We recognize that there was a need for one, but I do not believe that one was specifically for the LGBTQ community.
I'm agreeing with Mr. Taylor. I'm unaware of only of the current study that is underway.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to bill sponsor and to the agencies. You know, just wanted reaffirm what my colleague from the 8th District said. Just I hope that there is a way to thread the needle and potentially create a new category, given that, you know, we know that Black, trans folks are dying at a disproportionate rate in our city, including Amari. And that, you know, I think, totally understand where some of the equity concerns exist, but that, again, there are, there is a very real community of trans folks of all different races in our city, LGBTQ folks of all different races and genders and ethnicities. And I think that, especially during Pride Month, it would be really good for us to be able to figure this out because I just think that it's a community that has been historically underserved, not just in Baltimore, but across the country. And the more we can do, the better. And totally understand the logistical and cost challenges as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I wanted to, I wanted to try to hit the nail on the head a little bit more clearly on the, sort of, the equity piece around the gay white men. And I'll be straight, because I think we just want to put it out there and understand the real implications of the bill. So right now, if folks are Black, excuse me, not Black, but minorities, so Black, Latino, Asians, so on and so forth, or women, they would already be captured under a current city program, under the current IMBU office, which we know is understaffed. What this bill would do is, of course, add the LGBTQ designation as one of those preferences. But one of the concerns that I believe is noted, and I think Councilwoman Ramos alluded to, was that the only folks that would get an additional consideration as a result of this bill would be effectively white men and trans, trans, trans women. And so I think that's something to consider, and I'm not sure that we can really answer that question here. So I want to put that out there, and I don't know if Councilwoman Ramos, you want to address it at all, or I do think it would be a conversation that we want to have with Director Moore to better understand the implications of that and how we think about that.
Yes, but I also want to just correct you on one piece of it. It's, there are members of the LGBT community that want to identify as LGBT. And so I believe we would have more than just the two classifications of types of LGBT that you just described. Because that isn't, I mean, that's not what we're saying here. We're saying that, you know, there are members of the LGBT community that want to be considered in this. And when we looked at CityBuy, we even saw that there were, you know, just based on name, which isn't always accurate, that there are folks that are choosing that particular classification because that's how they want to be identified. So I disagree with the classification that it would only be those two that you were talking about because that, first of all, that's not the intent. And second of all, there's the fact that there are so many others. And then we can also discuss, and maybe this is an amendment at some point, that folks can, you know, classify as both. And then the IMBU decides, you know, how things, you know, classify out. But that's going to be a larger discussion.
Okay, yeah. And I, I want to put in full disclosure, always very difficult to sort of talk about these issues. But I think it's really important for us as a committee to talk about it and understand, understand what it means for, for the city going forward and how it will actually lay out. So yeah, definitely looking forward to better understanding what that means, how folks will utilize the program going forward. So, so we've touched on that. The other question, and I think this is something that we can probably, I think we just need to have some official way of thinking about this, is how to verify that someone is going to be a part of the LGBTQ designation. And so right now, I think even in our current CityBuy program, there are maybe three or four different designations, verifications done by different organizations. So I, I think that's one question that we'd want to ask and be pretty resolute on. Understanding that there's a certain threshold for folks so that, you know, there, there is some sort of credibility to the program and that, and it's carrying out.
Mr. Chair, if I can, the, the National LGBT Chamber has done this with a lot of, of other towns and counties. And the representative is away, so wasn't able to talk with us today, but is very clear about how that works.
Okay, cool. If we could, so how about this? For the next time we hear the bill, how about we just have them talk a little bit about that? Just so we can address that front, front and foremost. Because I think it's something that we can address. I, I don't know the logistics, of course. This bill has been rolled out in different cities across the country. So I'm sure someone has thought about this before. But just want to make sure we, we, we address it correctly here. Okay, so I have a bunch of follow-ups. Is, is there anything else, Councilwoman Ramos, or from, from any of the other committee members?
Just in, in closing, I appreciated the discussion today and look forward to the, I've dotted down three major follow-ups that we have for next time. I would ask, Mr. Chair, that, you know, we, we try to get this on the agenda relatively soon. I know our committee has a long, a lot to go to do. But this is something that's, you know, again, we had voted out unanimously before and also that a lot of people are interested in. So, and because of the change in leadership in Embu, I understand why we, you know, need to, we need to, you know, do some more follow-up. So I would just, you know, urge that we are able to schedule this relatively soon. And then, you know, happy to follow up with all of my, my colleagues to see if there's anything else that is a concern that we need to bring up for next time. And I appreciate the discussion. And I also appreciate Mr. Ingram stepping in, in like three hours' notice to, to stay with us during this time. And, you know, very helpful that you've already had this background, so it was great. But again, I just urge that we're able to, to schedule this and get those follow-ups taken care of, hopefully in the next week or so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Ramos. And you've, you've been, you've been awesome working on this. And it's been a pleasure working on this with you. And we'll, we'll continue to, to move this thing forward. So with that, if there's nothing else from the committee, we're going to be in recess. Thank you all.